Call the September 13th, 2021 Warrick County Commissioner meeting to order. Sheriff, please.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business this evening is a public hearing in the matter to petition to vacate part of Jenna Road, so anyone like to make a motion to adjourn from the regular meeting?
Some moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor.
It's a matter to vacate a part of Jenna Road being Lowell Road, 1916, and being part of Lot 1 in Victoria Woods, Boone Township, Warrick County, Indiana. It was advertised in the standard. Notices were sent out to the adjacent property owners. We have that affidavit, and we do have letters back from the utilities of non-objection.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim Morley Jr., project engineer. So I passed out to you all an exhibit. We came across this portion in Jenna Road. We were going through the plating process of Victoria Woods. This is an old section of Jenna Road that was mined through many, many, many years ago, back when they were doing the surface mining up in that area, and the road was never rebuilt, but they never vacated the right of way either. So there is, if you look on the exhibit, I pointed out, the kind of that red stripe there is where there is currently a Jenna Road right of way, but I assure you, there is no Jenna Road. It goes up and down over the hills and through lakes and everything else. And you can see it lines up. There's a large portion kind of in a teal color there that goes across to, I think, Dan Duckworth's property that is not a Jenna Road. There's no road there. And then there is a piece on the far side of the pit that it wouldn't, I guess in theory, be there, but there's no Jenna Road there. There is another lake and a couple big, and another pit. And so if you flip to the next page back, it kind of is a blow up of where that is. And you can see we, it crosses a pit here and then crosses another pit over here. And so through the development of that property, we ran, and we were doing our boundary and also survey, we ran across that. And so on the last sheet, this is the Victoria Woods primary plat, and that red line there is the Jenna Road right of way that never got vacated, and it's been here since 1916, I believe. And so we are seeking to have that right of way vacated so that we can proceed with the development of Victoria Woods. There's nothing in it, hadn't been anything in it since they mined through it, I don't know, what, 30, 40, 50 years ago, whenever they did that, that surface mining up in that area. That road will not be a part of the new project. The project has a whole different set of internal roadways on it. There's no easements in it, and it doesn't benefit anybody, and the property owner owns on both sides of it, so it's nobody else is using it. So we would ask that it be vacated.
Mr. Sherwood, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I think his description is fairly accurate from what I recall about it.
Yeah. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Okay, very well. Motion to read.
Need an ordinance number? Oh, I'm sorry, not election. Jump the gun.
I thought I was on.
No, you're right. You're to reconvene the meeting.
Second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, back in session here.
The ordinance number would be 2021-29.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Any questions, Commissioner Siller?
No, I don't think so.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-29 in the matter of petition to vacate part of Jenna Road.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Appreciate it. You got more?
So we ready for APC?
Ready for APC.
Okay. We do have some requests for extensions of surety, the first one being Berkshire Phase Two by Macon Corporation by Daniel Hubler, the president, holding a letter of credit totaling $40,588.90 for street and sidewalk. They're asking for a one-year extension at the same dollar amount. They have had three years. Their last letter of credit did expire September 9th of 2021 due to an oversight in the office. However, Mr. Hubler did go ahead and submit a new letter of credit, so we do have a letter of credit on file that is good. And the county engineer has signed off on the dollar amount being sufficient.
Anything to add, Mr. Sherwood?
No, the letter of credit from a year ago is sufficient. They've made some minor improvements, so it should be more than enough money to hold as a security for another year.
Counsel, is that okay that we're not renewing, we're accepting a new letter of credit here? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the extension of surety with the new letter of credit.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Our next one is Willow Estate subdivision. It's Thompson Homes, Inc. We're holding a letter of credit totaling $81,681.93 for street sidewalk and drainage construction. They're asking for a one-year extension and to reduce the dollar amount to $52,815.40. They've had six years. This letter of credit expires October 1st, 2021, and I believe the county engineer has signed off on the dollar amount on this one, and the surveyor has signed off on drainage.
Yes, Bobby has signed off on this letter of credit.
Very good.
Sufficiency. I make a motion to the extension of surety for Willow Estate subdivision.
Second. Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
We have some requests for releases of surety. The first one's a commercial entrance, C-20-028, construction at 8941 Bellmore Drive, Indiana Members Credit Union by Luke Yeager, the market president. We're holding a letter of credit totaling $17,376.70 guaranteeing the entrance construction. They've had one year. The letter of credit expires September 23rd of 2021. This site has been inspected, and the county engineer did sign off on the request also.
Yes, Bobby did sign off the amount to be released as well. Was this, was this the drive that we had an issue with that was repaired? But when?
I don't think so.
Not this drive? Not this one, I don't believe. Okay. So it's all good? Yes. I make a motion to release the surety for the 8941 Bellmore Drive.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
We have a release of surety for another entrance. It's C-20-057, entrance construction for Evansville Christian School at 4400 Lincoln Avenue. Evansville Christian School by Mike Allen, head of school. We're holding a letter of credit totaling $57,481.26 guaranteeing the construction. They've had one year. This letter of credit expires October 9th of 2021, and the county engineer has inspected and signed off on the request.
Again, Bobby has signed off and recommends release.
Very good. You're on a roll.
I make a motion to release the surety for the Evansville Christian School.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, we have three rezoning requests. First one's PCR 2105, petitioner owner is 2400 Green River Investments LLC by Chris Combs, managing member. The request is to rezone 22.26 acres located on the south side of Oak Grove Road, approximately 1650 feet west of the intersection of Oak Grove Road and Libbert Road from A Agricultural Zoning District to R2B PUD, a multiple-family dwelling planned unit development zoning district. Ohio Township 2169, the complete legal on file. It was advertised in the standard on July 29th of 2021, and the APC gave a unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting held on August 9th, 2021.
Gentlemen.
Scott Beadle with Cash Wagner and Associates.
Chris Combs, 2400. Like Molly had said, we did receive approval from plan commissioner, or a recommendation from plan commissioner for the rezoning. It's a 118-unit development similar to Magnolia that's over off of Bell Road that Chris also did, so there'll be basically six plexes, eight plexes, and the site from the standpoint of how it's being developed is pretty well set up for that. It's going to be a relatively flat site once it's raised up out of the floodplain, and we think we have some nice features on it, some large lakes that were required. We needed the lakes to be the size they are for the purpose to fill on the site, so we feel like those are going to be some assets to the development, and Chris is wanting to do a walking trail. There's going to be a sidewalk around one side of the road, and then one that also goes up around the northern lake, basically as a walking trail for the community. And other than that, we've been working with the adjacent property, Center Point, from the standpoint of getting access to the sewer to the south and also topsoil storage off to the side. So we've worked closely with Center Point through the process and at this final stage to ask for your vote for rezoning.
Mr. Sherwood, anything to add?
This is the same property that I believe is known as the Villasburg Road, which already have previous street drainage plan approval.
Yes, that is correct.
And the plat was approved subject to the zoning being approved tonight.
Very good. Got an ordinance number?
It'd be 30.
I wasn't keeping track. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this? Mr. Richardson, your district, anything to add?
No, yes, just one thing. Chris, what the maintenance of these lakes and ponds, is that going to be in the covenants or?
It is in the covenants and restrictions for the homeowners. There will be a fee charged to do that.
So there's going to be an association there then?
That is correct. The lakes will be treated, we're stocking them with fish, we're putting fountains in them.
You interested in assuming any more responsibility for anymore?
No. I got all I need, believe it.
I make a, so there's no remonstrators here. So I make a motion to approve the request to rezone in, what's that ordinance number?
30.
30. Ordinance number 2021-30.
Second. Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Next up is PCR 2106, petitioner owner is Larry McNeely, to rezone 22.43 acres located on the north and west of the terminus, Hornbrook Drive, approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection formed by Hornbrook Drive and New Harmony Road, from A Agricultural Zoning District to R1D PUD, a one-family dwelling zoning district. Boone Township, 1058, completely legal on file. It was advertised in the standard July 29th of 2021, and the APC gave unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting held on August 9th of 2021.
Gentlemen.
I'm Chad Wagner, the surveyor on this project. This is Bill McNeely. He's the son of Larry McNeely. He's the owner, he's here. The reason why we're having to do the rezoning for the 22.4 acres is because that's at the end of a private lane, private drive, so we had to extend the private drive a short distance, about 50 feet, and then rezone to a PUD in order for us to be able to use that private drive. So the drive will continue to be maintained by the McNeelings. And this is going to be a two-lot subdivision. There's already a home on the 22.4 acres, and Bill's going to be constructing a new home on the property.
Steve, anything to add?
No issues.
All entertain a motion. Anybody here to speak for or against, I apologize? No one here? Okay.
Ordinance number 2021-31?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve PCR 21-06, ordinance number 2021-31.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
We have PCR 2107, petitioner owner is James Boyer by Shear Receivers, the POA, to rezone 48.336 acres located on the south side of Myers Road, approximately 1,200 feet south of the intersection of Myers Road and Fortune Road, from FP Flood Plains Zoning District and A Agricultural to R1D One Family Dwelling, PUD. I believe there's a typo there. Yes, I'm sorry, it's a PUD on this one as well because it does have a private road. It's in Boone Township, 367, completely legal on file. It was advertised in the standard July 29th of 2021, and the APC gave unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting held on August 9th, 2021.
Okay, very good. No one's here to appear. Any issues, Mr. Sherwood?
No, again, it's private road, so no issues.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-32?
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Three, 32? Last item for our office would be the street construction plans for PP-21-14, Amago subdivision. The petitioner owner is Amago LLC in Indiana Limited Liability Company by Thomas Hartman, the owner. 4.201 acres located on the north side of Oak Grove Road, approximately 200 feet east of the intersection formed by Oak Grove Road and Libbert Road. Ohio Township, 1569 at 8866 Oak Grove Road. They are requesting no improvements to Oak Grove Road. And the county engineer did sign off on their request. It's a two-lot residential subdivision is what they're proposing to do.
Steve, anything to add?
This is the same property came up at drainage board for no drainage plan approval. Unless further development of those two lots is going to occur, Bobby recommends no improvements to Oak Grove Road at this time.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve the street construction plans.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
That's all for the area plan commission.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is an item for discussion. Roger.
Thank you, Mr. President. The one item for discussion is to approve a letter of support to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for an Okra Historic Preservation Grant to Miller's Five and Ten Cent Store here on the square. And we did draft the letter, and Terry has signed that. I have a copy, which is unsigned, but request the board approve this by motion.
Yep. Be it just a nice, if he gets this grant, it'll be a nice step in the right direction for the facades of the front of the buildings of Boonville, Indiana.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Next item of, next item is the approval of minutes, August 23rd, 2021 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. And next item of business is our county administrator. Roger.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Item number, number one, easements received from the city of Boonville to locate a waterline by the Warrick County 4H Center. You tabled this on, at your August 23rd meeting. Bobby went, there were some emails back and forth between Bobby and Clint Rhodes of Midwestern Engineers regarding more detail on the easement. So I don't know at this time, Bobby's, you know, consulted with Steve or advised him about this, but it may be an item the board may want to table until your next meeting.
Yeah, Sheriff, while we're on this conversation, at some point, we need to bring you into this conversation as the jail committee chairman. When we first started talking about this, the easement was going to go along Roth Road to Highway 62, basically at a right angle, and the drawing that they presented to us was something different through the middle of the property. And if, if a new jail is going to be built at some point in the future, then we need to talk about this, so just, just a heads up.
So we need, we need to table this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
I make a motion to table till the October 11th, 2021 meeting?
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
The next item I have is an ordinance for the 2022 holidays, and I'm assuming that would be 2021-33.
Yes, sir.
This ordinance lists 15 holidays next year in 2022.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-33?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Next is to approve a couple of pandemic relief fund requests. 21-48 is Health Department for the Ungun Team contract, $2,400. That's 1,200 each for the months of June and July of this year, and this completes the contract with Ms. Ungun Team. And 21-49 is Find Hatfield August 2021 invoices regarding COVID-19 matters, and Todd did present the corrected invoice to me prior to the meeting, and that amount, total amount requested is $4,826 even. Just request the board approve those two by motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Next would be consent agenda. There are 12 items on there, and unless you have specific questions and need additional information, the board can approve these by, by motion, by single motion.
You want to follow the agenda or go on into?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's cool.
You can do either one.
Since he's already presented it, let's get that out.
Sorry, Todd.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Just want to make sure, just have no questions on any of them.
Second.
One, one correction. I put down on the county treasurer's report that was July. Heather advised that was actually the August 2021 report.
August 2021 treasurer's report has been presented. Very good. I have a question.
It's both. I do have both, so.
So it's July and August?
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, real quick, regarding a claim. Auditor Stevens? From Circuit Court, we have a claim that we've been asked about here for?
Is it on your voucher for approval?
It is not, and that's the question. Why is this not presented? Let's see here. I'm having a hard time. Let me just find the claim sheet here. It's for CDW, for $2,502.28 for MS Surf Pro 17 by 2. That sounds like a couple of laptops to me. I'm not sure that's what it is. Any information on this?
I don't, I have, I don't know what you're talking about.
Heather, do you know if this is two laptops? That's what it looks like to me.
Okay, and your question is?
I don't believe it's been presented in any way, shape, or form.
Looks like it may have originally been returned for a new account number on the claim, which has, we have a stamp on it of August 23rd. You know, I really can't answer your question. You have a question about it. You're saying we received it, we received it August 23rd. Obviously, it looks like we may have communicated with them for a corrected account number, and it looks like it had been corrected and sent back. So I'm not sure if this August 23rd date was the original date where we had to get the claim corrected. You're asking me about something that you probably could have emailed me and maybe given me a little heads up, so to be blindsided by a claim and asking why isn't it paid and why isn't it on the voucher? There could be?
It was actually just handed to me today, so.
Okay.
I've been in meetings all day. I'm just asked, to ask the question.
Right. August 23rd would have been week before last, and any claims that we would have had before that with a holiday?
I think the concern is that I've seen various claims that haven't been paid in a timely manner, not saying that that's your fault. I know we've had some in our office that were.
There could be much more to this claim than what you handed me. If there was, if this was sent back to the department for the correction for the account number, which it looks like it was at some point, that could have delayed it, and then we would have gotten it back. It looks like a claim that probably would have to go on the next voucher. It's not contractual, so it's.
How long can those be held? For various reasons.
You're, you're asking me if it's been held? I have no evidence that it's being held. We don't hold claims.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking what can you tell me about it?
Let's say we got it on the 23rd, or it was returned and brought back to our office. It could be behind other claims. Today is, what is today, the 13th? Your voucher was turned over to you last Wednesday, which meant we would have cut off claims probably Monday, well, Monday was a holiday, so we may have started wrapping up some of the claims on Friday, which I don't have a calendar in front of me. Let me take a look and see.
Terry, this says claim received on date August 6, 2021. Then they say the corrected claim must be received by August, I guess 19th, to remain in the next claim cycle. Fun account number incorrect.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what this, this even coming to be honest.
So. It was pink slip, so was the account number, you recognize it as being an incorrect account number?
They were using an old, looks like, looked like an old account number.
Okay.
From, from an old system, which would have had to been corrected.
So that 1211, is that the number you're talking about?
Again, I don't know. Let me hand it back.
So I apologize. I'm just now looking at a little more detail. It says it's been returned to the court seven times.
Seven times?
Seven times.
I don't understand things. Who's telling you it was returned seven times?
The court. Okay, so I'm not sure we have an answer here.
It looks like it was returned once for an account number change.
Perhaps the board could just request the auditor to look into it tomorrow.
I'm happy to, and I would have been happy to do that prior to the meeting, and I probably could have had some answers for you.
Do you want me to give her my copy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Todd, that's your copy.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay?
No.
I apologize for the sidetrack there.
I apologize for the sidetrack there, but I have a first and a second.
Oh wait, let me interrupt you. I'm sorry. Number eight on there talks about approval of the fixed asset notification form. I discussed this with, this under the consent agenda. I discussed this with Todd prior to the meeting, and we really shouldn't approve that until the resolutions from the town of Newburgh and from the Board of Commissioners, Newburgh to donate, Warrick County to accept, are in place. Correct, Todd?
Correct.
So we just need to strike that from?
Yes, approve all of them except for number eight.
And with it, and with the correction of the treasurer's report being both July and August.
Got you.
And then if that is the correct motion.
Do you want to restate the motion, or just, or just with those corrections?
You have moved to approve the consent agenda with those two corrections.
Yeah, treasurer's report, July and August, and removal of the accepted donation for the Humvee. All right, that's my motion.
Second.
All right.
It'll be clear in my head.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
President, I have one more item under my other items. And this was requested to be added by County Attorney John Goth. It is to, a motion to approve termination of all agreements between Warrick County and CSI, that's Computer Systems Incorporated. John sent me the letter on September tenth. Terry signed it, and I mailed it certified that day to CSI. This is regarding clerk's office computer services by CSI.
All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our county attorney. Mr. Lass?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few quick items, a couple resolutions on establishment of speed limits. The first one is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution of Board of Commissioners of Warrick County establishing the maximum speed limit in Fieldstone Subdivision in Warrick County, Indiana, placing the maximum speed limit of twenty miles per hour on each of those streets comprising the Fieldstone Subdivision, including without limitation Foxmore Drive, Brandywine Drive, Glenbrook Drive, Hawthorne Drive, and Stone Garden Lane. And that resolution is before the board for approval today.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. All right.
Thank you. Second one is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. Again, this is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners establishing the maximum speed limit in Berkshire Subdivision in Warrick County, Indiana, setting the maximum speed limit at twenty miles per hour on each of those streets comprising the Berkshire Subdivision, including without limitation Brompton Drive, Belmont Drive, Camden Drive, Abbey Wood Drive, Park Boulevard, Whitechapel Drive, Bloomsbury Court, Eastwick Drive, and Brentford Drive. This resolution is ready for your approval, and that is Brent, Berkshire Subdivision on the north side of Oak Grove Road near Friedman Park.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And lastly, Mr. President, I, this is not on your agenda. We have a proposed ordinance which if approved would be twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four.
It would.
And that would be an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Warrick County in Indiana establishing a home rule fund for the road usage agreement charges, fees, to establish a perpetual discretionary fund in the Code of Ordinances of Warrick County, amending thirty-seven point two six, creating the Road Usage Agreement Fund for the purposes of collecting fees paid to Warrick County as part of any road usage agreement entered into by Warrick County pursuant to your recently amended Section seventy point oh eight of Warrick County Code of Ordinances. I believe the auditor and treasurer's office needs this fund created. It simply creates the Road Usage Agreement Fund, non-reverting perpetual discretionary fund.
Understand. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all?
That's all.
Thank you. All right, where are we at? Next item on the agenda is our county economic development director.
Steve Rowley, Economic Development. Good afternoon. I've got three documents for everyone's signatures. They have to do with the payment to Mainstream for our fiber backbone project. As you guys are aware, we decided, the commissioners decided to make some of that payment from our ARP funds. In order to do that, and for the county to have the distribution of those funds, a subaward agreement needed to be created. Todd and John put that together between the county and Mainstream. By making changes to the payment from the original economic development agreement, we also have two other documents, the Third Amendment to the Broadband Economic Development Agreement, which outlines those changes that we made for the payment. And then we also have a financing agreement as part of the broadband agreement. And this would be the First Amendment to the financing agreement, which outlines the terms of using these ARP funds and making this payment to Mainstream. All three of these have been reviewed by Commissioners Council, have been reviewed by Economic Development Council, have been agreed to by Mainstream. Mainstream has signed them. I have signed where appropriate. And I believe that you guys have three copies of each. And the commissioners will keep a copy. We will keep a copy on file in Economic Development, and then we will take a second, the last copy, and we will forward those to Mainstream.
Mr. President, if I could, I just want to mention this was kind of a curveball in the use of the ARP funds, but I do appreciate the help Mr. Rowley and Mr. Davis provided, because they had to get this wrapped up in a nice package and get it done, and they did. So we appreciate that. This would be a motion, Mr. President, if you wanted to, to approve and authorize the signing of the subaward agreement, the Third Amendment to the Broadband Economic Development Agreement, and the First Amendment to the Financing Agreement.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Let's see here, that appears to be it. Mr. Saylor?
I have nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
It was horrible.
Thirty-nine.
Fifteen, I have four.